The Union High School District Board of Directors meeting today is Wednesday, August twenty first. We are operating off an amended agenda that was sent out earlier today. It's amended just to add more nominations because people are getting hired. So the first item on the agenda is public comments. I'm going to ask that public comments are kept to two minutes per individual in order to keep the meeting moving along and so we can get to the agenda that we have. Anyone here for public comments?
It's probably gonna take a little bit longer for me than two minutes, but I'll make a clip. Okay, I know you guys want to get out of here, but it's been a minute for about an hour.
Fran, we know, we know who you are with TV, nothing like that.
Now Fran, Kenny, ex-board member. Okay, I'll start. Uh, let's see. Starting out, I was born into poverty here in the town of Bennington. Father was killed in the war when I was born, so I didn't know him. Mother had to give me and my sister up because she's a young mother, probably sixteen, whatever it was, and couldn't take care of us. So my point of saying that is you don't miss what you don't have. And this thing with the turf field thing, uh, it's a lot of money, it's a money pit, but anyway. Starting out, you got forty percent inflation. It's a hefty tax for everybody. They're paying ten to twelve grand more out of their monies because of the price of everything. And they, they just, uh, you know, they're spending money out of their four hundred Ks or savings. It's getting depleted because of the clowns that are in office here currently. I mean, you're paying more for the gas, groceries, uh, everything. Uh, you got the agency of education, gonna hit you with a fourteen percent property tax increase. That's, that's a given, you're gonna pay it whether you like it or not. Now, maybe they'll do that again next year too, who the hell knows? Uh, you've got, uh, I did some real quick math on this, this thing. People say their taxes, they're, they're paying seven thousand right now. You're gonna take almost a thousand dollar hit, like nine eighty, I'm trying to be conservative. Five thousand, you're gonna take a seven hundred dollar hit. Uh, three thousand, you're gonna take four thirty. Now, if it goes to, uh, the happy, uh, town tax for the, um, the people from the home sit tax, they're gonna get hit with a four and a half percent increase. Now, if you add those two up, then those figures go to twelve ninety-five, nine twenty-five, or five fifty-five. It depends what, what year in Star's tax bracket, so. And they're gonna send out the tax bills before this vote on the Spennelli Field. So this oughta be interesting, see how many people vote for. Now, we said it was a low turnout on the meeting on, uh, March, uh, but the low turnout turned out to be fifty-five hundred people. That's never happened in Bennington, it's usually eighteen hundred to about twenty-three hundred people to vote. So that, that was pretty good, and it's, it still went down for a second time. Board number, one board member on this board wanted to know why people kept saying no. And I was present at that March meeting after the vote went down a second time. And this came from Penny and told, we had the woman, Phyllis Postman, was a bus driver, eighty-one years old, still working, and her husband's still working, said no. And one board member fidgeted in her seat and flipped her hair, a, a sign of disrespect for that eighty-one-year-old woman. And this isn't the first time I've seen a board member do that. I've been on this board for over thirty years, I've seen it all. And it's just, you know, they wanna know why, you know, people are scared to death. They can't stay in their homes, they don't have the monies to take these tax hits. Yeah, and it just, you know, and I've been asked to come and speak because I don't care what I say, and if I kick somebody off, that's it, I'm almost done.
Okay. I wanted to respectful about.
Yeah, that's fine. People say, you know, remember the middle school that said build it, little Tom? Well, we built it, they didn't come, that's why your sixth graders are up there, okay? And we're saying the same, same thing about Spennelli Field. Oh, you build it, they'll come with the turf field. They're not gonna come because of that field, it, it's not gonna happen. They're not, most of your motels and stuff are section eights. They're not gonna come and fill up the motels like some clients used to say, and do the restaurants. All of us have been to restaurants, we know how much it costs to eat at a restaurant today. Hell, even at Burger King, it's twenty-seven dollars, whatever it is. Uh, let's see, I'm, I'm trying to finish down, I got a lot of notes.
I'm asking to wrap it up.
Yeah. Three times I've asked about what do they do with the turf field, well, it comes time to get rid of it. And it said, well, they, they chew it up and they use it for insulation. I doubt that very much because on the, the bills here, for the figures, it's got, uh, annual maintenance or whatever it is, which is two hundred and sixty thousand dollars for the transportation landfill. Anyway, NFL's getting rid of their turf fields, uh, we're being plagued by the, they're heading up the high schools because that's the next thing, so they're getting rid of it, okay? So I hope that, you know, when somebody says, if, when this vote goes down a third time, that you get the hint and stop bringing this stuff before, because the people can't afford it. Okay?
Thanks.
All right, I got stuff to do, you have a nice meeting.
Are there any other public comments?
Dave, take care.
Uh, Adam Souzer, that's, uh, Souzer IT. If he exists, otherwise there's no member of the public at tronics.
Okay, great, we will move on to finances. Um, and close is a copy of the treasure report for June and July. Can I have a motion to approve the report? Reports.
Sure. Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Hi. Um, we're gonna move on to operations, where?
Just, sorry, um, for Richard, because he asked.
Oh, okay.
I wanna make sure we, so that was seconded by Scott.
First line of one for.
Oh, and, okay, we'll move on to operations.
Good point.
There's a P A system upgrade with action for question?
Uh, our principals can attest to the struggles that we've been having with our public address systems, especially with, when we upgraded our phone systems, which is a new modern digital system, and our public address systems are not. Adam Souzer, uh, from Souzer IT, who is our Director of Technology, uh, is here with a recommendation, to, so that we can order parts, and Director of Finance is here to tell you how we're gonna pay for it. So, Adam, good evening.
So, good, good evening, everyone. So I, I was just gonna give you a high-level summary of, um, I guess, the P A system and, uh, what we're proposing to do. Jim, would you be?
Can you turn the volume up for a minute, Adam?
Good.
Oh, you can't hear me? Um.
We can now, yes.
All right. Would you be able to give me the ability to share my screen? So, um, you know, the, the buildings have P A systems that range from, I'd say the newest one is gonna be at the middle school, uh, and that was installed when the middle school was built, uh, all the way, you know, some of the stuff is pushing thirty years old. Um, and it's, it's way past its, uh, useful life. Um, so, you know, thirty years ago, uh, technology looked very differently. Uh, the way telephone systems were, worked, uh, was very different. Uh, so it's, uh, time to start looking at upgrading the systems, they're, they're starting to have trouble and fail. The middle school, which I can see Chris is there, um, has, uh, you know, we have to reboot the system to make it come back and sound normal and be usable, um, which, you know, is doing, doing that, you know, works during the day-to-day, but if there was ever a crisis, um, you know, we don't wanna wait for the, the system to have to reboot. Um, so we're trying to get ahead of, uh, impending, it, it, it's eventually gonna become a crisis. Um, like the system will fail and be unreparable. Uh, the parts that, when we do call the company that services the current system, they're buying stuff off of eBay, uh, they're buying used parts. Um, it's really just not a position that, uh, I don't think the district wants to be in. Um, relying on, you know, used parts in the, in the used part market. So what we did was, um, we, uh, did an R F P back in, um, March, April, uh, really just to get an idea of what it's gonna cost to, uh, replace the system. One of the challenges that, um, we've faced with a P A system is really just the geographical location of S V S U, uh, where there's really not a lot of vendors that can maintain, um, support, uh, and then also upgrade the existing system. So we did an R F P, uh, for hardware and software only. Uh, we did a trial run of, um, the in-house I T, uh, s- doing the, uh, primary support at Shaftesbury, uh, for the P A system. So we did replace, because the P A system completely failed in Shaftesbury, uh, so we replaced the P A system. And the in-house I T, uh, the team, um, that works, boots on the ground every day, um, has been able to handle the day-to-day maintenance of the system, um, which is an area that we, when we, when we did the R F P, we were looking to write it in a way that whatever is gonna be proposed to us, we can rely on a vendor, um, and it's not gonna be overcomplicated, uh, for the vendors in the area. Uh, but then if we can't get a vendor to the table, that we can rely on, um, the resources that are available, uh, to the school district to maintain, um, and repair the system. Um, so, you know, in, in the R F P, we, uh, just, it, it's, it's pretty simple, it's speakers, um, but we, we asked to have, you know, future, um, functionality built in, where if we wanted to add strobe lights, we'd be able to add strobe lights. If they wanted to do what's called talk back, uh, they'd be able to do that. I think Chris's building is the only building in the district that has, or had that feature. Um, and that's the ability for classroom teachers to press a button on the wall and talk back to the, um, main office, uh, or the main office to call and just speak through the speaker in the, in the classroom. And then we broke it down out of, again, simplicity and trying to keep this as simple of a system as possible. Uh, we really broke it down into three speaker categories. Um, all of the vendors that replied narrowed it down to two speakers, uh, because they, they heard us when we, um, we, we had a phone, a video call to discuss the R F P and what we were looking for. Um, so what, what this means is that the district would only have to stock two variations of speakers, um, to be able to support the entire system. Where right now, we have a different system for every single building. It makes the parts, the repair, um, that aspect of it a little bit more complicated. Uh, so when we did this R F P, we tried to narrow it down to three. Um, the vendors that responded were able to narrow it down to two. Um, so again, what that means is we only have to keep two model numbers, uh, or part numbers in stock to be able to repair the system, uh, no matter where, which building it's in. I'm not gonna go through the technical specs, uh, but the way we wrote the R F P was, we said we can move forward with one building, or none, um, or all. And we had three vendors reply. Um, two of the vendors the district has had a relationship with, uh, so S H I, um, the districts has, has a relationship with, and then First Choice is another vendor that we, um, the district uses, I'd say, on a regular basis. Uh, Stark Technologies was a new one, um, to the table. Um, so, uh, just out of price, uh, they, they all also responded with, uh, similar. Um, some of them had overlapping, uh, manufacturers. Telcor was a manufacturer that was, um, proposed, and then Bogan was the other manufacturer that was proposed. Uh, Bogan being, um, you know, what, what we, the bulk of what's currently in place with an S V S U, and typically what I see in schools, um, it's, it's a very, it's like a household name, uh, when it comes to P A systems. So, uh, S H I responded with a hundred percent Bogan solution. Um, they came in significantly lower. Um, we had some follow-up calls just to make sure that we are comparing apples to apples. And we're confident that we are. Um, Stark Technologies came in, uh, they, I believe, they were, they were the ones offering the Telcor solution. Very similar features. It wasn't, wasn't much of a difference from a, from a product, uh, perspective. Um, all of them had similar warranties, um, and all of them were commercial or education-level, um, equipment. So what we're asking for is where the, the biggest need is from a P A system right now is at the high school and middle school. Um, those are the systems that are having the most issues. Um, so Renee, th- th- these are hardware-only quotes. Uh, part of this was, uh, to also leverage, uh, local electricians to help us pull all the new cabling. Um, so these numbers only reflect the hardware and software side of it. And then we were gonna work with local electricians and the current, um, and local vendors and the current I T staff, uh, to do the hardware, or to do the, um, the installation side of it. Guess I'll.
Said that the, the installation you were thinking was gonna be about what the hardware costs are.
Yeah, I, I, I would typically, you know, and this is, um, just from experience, I typically say if the hardware's fifty thousand, typically you would expect the labor to be fifty thousand. Um, I think the district got a steal on the pricing for the hardware. Um, so I'd say I would go a little bit hu- from a budgeting perspective, um, go a little bit higher, um, than, than a one-to-one. But typically, that's what I've, that's what I've seen. So we're gonna do, we're gonna do an R F, another smaller R F P, because it's not gonna, the total value's not gonna be the same. Um, but kinda let local electricians pick which aspect, and then we'll do the project management side of it.
So the, the project, um, was an on Holly's list of things for F Y twenty-five. But as we know, during every budget season, we always have a pretty significant fund balance. So I anticipate that there's gonna be breakage, um, we have several vacancies right now. But worst-case scenario, we always carry that three hundred thousand dollar contingency. So if we were to spend every dime of everything that was budgeted for every position, every project, everything, we would have to dip into that contingency money, which would certainly cover the hardware and what we're projecting possibly for the installation. So it's not allocated specifically, but I, I am comfortable that we'll have something to cover it.
I would be asking for a motion to approve the purchase of the equipment and then use back from a motion or, or.
If that's the, yeah, if that's the way that Adam wants to, to go about the installation. Uh, because it's technically a service, it doesn't fall under the public bid statute, so we wouldn't necessarily have to have the board act upon it, so if the board wanted to just say, you know, yes, we authorize you to purchase and then figure out the installation, you know, by the administration, we can do it that way.
And I, um, if I may, just add, you know, the, the reason I'm pushing for the installation to be done a little bit differently is we're, we're actively working with a brand-new school building that's having an issue with their P A system. Um, and because of how rural they are, uh, the, the installer, um, i- it's, it's, it's become a two-month project, um, and that, and it, it's because it's hard to schedule someone to come out there. So the, the install component, um, is a little bit different than how I would normally approach this. And I, I think trying to lean on local, um, vendors, um, and the local people. Um, so that, that's why there's no clear cut, like, this is how the install's gonna, um, play out. But I, I, you know, spoke with Holly, um, she's confident that, um, you know, she'll be able to find electricians to help with the cabling aspect of it. And I'm confident in the local I T's, um, ability to, you know, do things like terminating cable and managing the, the software configuration of the system.
The motion should read to approve the purchase of equipment as presented? And with the dollar figures. So Adam, when you're talking, you didn't want a one-for-one on installation versus that, but this dollar figure is okay for equipment?
Yeah, this dollar figure comes back to, um, so we have the three proposals, and then, um, each vendor broke it down by building. So I have the, you know, this is, this is the, the quote that we received and the proposal that we received. So that, that is the total dollar amount for the hardware and software.
We have a motion that we can ask questions.
But do you want to also identify that you're promoting?
To S H I International.
I have a motion to award the, uh, to, for hardware for S H I International, any amount, are we doing the full amount? Is there, is it, or, any amount of two hundred and eighty-four thousand, four hundred and seventy-eight dollars?
No, you're gonna do the, uh, the high school and middle school, no, sure.
That's amazing, thank you. Um, all right, can I have a motion to award the, the S H I International? Um, uh, in the total amount of one hundred and twenty-five thousand, four hundred and sixty-eight dollars and twenty cents, um, to be installed, uh, with, uh, local electricians in coordination with administration. So.
Don't move.
Second, you don't wanna do that math on the fly?
No, I was just asking.
She was almost there.
Was that you, Adam?
Yeah, I got it, all right.
Any discussion?
Does any of that affect, affect speakers in the gym?
It's a separate deal that we're, we're, we'll get for basketballs.
Will this work with Southwest Tech also to make sure that any? Um, will this work with Southwest Tech, the, the integration of the high school to make sure that any important messages that are building-wide, like, will be integrated between the two's?
Um, we haven't opened that channel of communication, but this makes it a lot easier if they, they would like to. Um, so this, this system has, uh, the ability, so, you know, someone could initiate an, a, a page across multiple buildings. Um, so we would be able to add Southwest Tech as like its own building per se, even though physically it's one building. Uh, but, so I guess the answer is it opens the door for it.
Discussion. All in favor?
Hi.
Motion passes. Oh, um, so, I just, I, I'm sorry, didn't remember that Dave made the motion.
I second.
And Jill had seconded the motion, I won't try to remember to do that. All right. Um, moving on to the consent agenda, uh, we have minutes, warrants, retirements, leave of absence, resignations, and nominations. Um, I have a motion to move all as one.
Don't move, second.
All right, um, in the session.
Scott was first, Lev was second.
Any discussion?
Discussion. The meetings, it talked about the bus driver and his problems. Has any of that been addressed, is, you know, I, it sounded kinda scary.
We have a meeting scheduled with due for transportation for Tuesday next week to discuss that figure of the school year. Communication between administration and due-for-transportation on discipline issues, that is, it's Tuesday at noon. Requested by due-for-transportation.
Any other discussion items? All in favor? All right. Okay, motion carries. There are no policies, so we'll provide a superintendent's report.
David, uh, Tony, who's on any of our other boards have already heard this final report, my apologies, but not ever to be out. So every summer, we do a, we call it a administrative retreat, but this year we rebranded it and renamed it. It's the S V S U Leadership Academy, and it's two days of our administrators all coming together, all principals, all vice principals, all directors, assistant directors, so all over thirty people, for two days of training. So I always call the word retreat, you know, blood like we're hanging around by the hotel pool, have a nice time, as opposed to being, uh, in a classroom for two days. The focus of this year, uh, throughout our administrative meeting throughout the year is going to be data, the use of data, the understanding of data, the breakdown of data. So the Summer Leadership Academy also focused on that, but also legal updates for administrators. We had, uh, one of our guest speakers was the S V S U attorney, Dean Hathaway. She ran one of the sessions with, uh, changes that happened in educational law and a focus on, uh, Title IX issues. We also, uh, had Bob Stafford recently retired from the Agency of Education. Bob is somebody that superintendents deal with on potential license issues that may happen against educators. So felt it was an important topic for administrators to maul here about, um, guidelines on on issues that could get educators in trouble against their license. And, um, also, uh, there was a lot of scenarios for administrators, uh, so successful, uh, well-attended. And we will continue, uh, with the ongoing, uh, professional development for administrators throughout the year, particularly on data. And, yeah, I think H R, there are a few openings, but in my meetings with H R Director, uh, Big Golt, have you reported to me that we have fewer open positions as we enter this hiring of school than we have since before COVID? So, uh, the hiring pace has been frantic, your principals and administrators in the H R department have had frantic, uh, the end of the summer, I, I'd like to say this, he thinks this is the worst week of the year because of all the last, I know he was, uh, emailing out offers before we left this afternoon. And thank you for helping us with, you know, I try not to walk in anything at a meeting or make a last-minute amendment, but, uh, we wanted to get nominations form so we can, done, so we can get offers and secure teachers, because some of them may be getting multiple offers, so I thank you for indulgence. Plus, I wanna talk to, but I, but also, the amount of construction that's gone on in our schools the past two summers in school year because of all the federal funds that, you know, have come and away. We'll never see the likes of this again, uh, for a long time. And, uh, you know, Holly's done, uh, tremendous job, Tony's done a tremendous job for managing all these construction projects. But I want to bring this in that not everything's gonna be done. Now, earlier this week, uh, toward the high school, uh, last week, twice this week, uh, because my concerns are, would we be ready to open? It's not just the high school, I also had the same concern with Bennington Elementary School, because of the vast amount of construction that's going there. I've been assured that we can open on time, because I, I kept stressing that if we at all, we're not gonna be able to open, we need to tell parents as soon as possible because of the impact of, you know, childcare, particularly at the elementary level. I do have, give me to read. Let's go into the high school, so, or here's to, uh, by the end of business on Friday, the gym and cafeteria construction will be substantially complete. What's the construction going, I mean, I don't know, but next time you go there, the amount of duck work, spiral duck work, that is now in the, the gym, in the cafeteria, uh, even with my construction background, I'm pretty impressed with what I've seen in scope, the work that's gone, or what you should always say. When this is all done, the auditorium, the gymnasium, and the cafeteria at the high school will be, uh, air-conditioned venues, and the entire middle school will be also air-conditioned. We waited until Tim Payne moved on to make sure that was a project, because he's always asked for, put it in his budget every year. Um, so no, they, it's, it's just, I'm so thrilled that we're gonna actually have this, uh, this opportunity for the buildings and for the public areas of the high school. So the high school gym cafeteria will be substantially created by Friday, as I said. The units have been started, I was there earlier this week, there were, you know, testing in the, uh, the gymnasium, and, you know, we'd be very impressed that the work that went to, like, to protect the gym floor, first what's called the builder, builder's board was down, then, uh, two-by-eight planks laid down and then plywood on that for all the heavy lifts that were operating up into the ductwork to protect the floor. So that will all be removed, uh, and the, you know, the cafeteria is substantially done, though, I'll be honest, it's, it's very dirty, it needs substantial cleaning, and that, that will be done. The kitchen, uh, will not be usable on Monday, uh, but we'll have students until Wednesday, and on Wednesday, you're only going to have, uh, kitchen uh, will not be usable on Monday, uh, but won't have students until Wednesday and on Wednesday you're only going to have uh, ninth graders there. The auditorium will not be usable, it's probably not till after Labor Day, maybe even a week later than that, so before the auditorium, it's completely staged off right now, particularly over the riser part of it, because you can't use a lift there, so that completely has staging to get up for the duck work that's been done there. We also found that there, there still will be workers in the mechanical rooms at the outside of the buildings once students are there. I have asked Holly to double check and she assured me it's been done, that because once we have students in the building, that we do have background checks on all workers, where the building's going. To assure you that, uh, I've requested that, I'm assured that it's been done, but we will continue to monitor that. Any construction work though inside will be coordinated with the building administrators, I keep stressing, uh, particularly Holly, Tony. If they don't understand the stress that our principals are going under as their staff return to the buildings and like, I'm beginning to set up my classroom, I gotta, you know, and, and it looks like a major construction zone. I, I thank everybody for their patience, I'll, I go back to what I said, the level of construction that we have had is unprecedented, we've never had this level before. We uh, you know, which are total federal construction dollar that man?
All schools. All schools were the over twelve million.
Over twelve million, so, um we didn't get everything that we wanted, but we, we got a lot. Some items that still need to happen after school begins, as deliveries allow, they'll be replacing bathroom petitions, sinks, faucets, emerors, some of the bathrooms have been done. Very impressed with how they look and it's, you know, again, thank you Principal Payne for always pushing for that, that we needed to uh, make that a priority. But all that work will happen after two P M on school days. There's still twenty-nine interior doors at the high school that need to be replaced in the original building. Also, as they are scheduled, as deliveries come in, they'll be after two P M. New hardware on a new grand master key system. East campus heat pumps have been installed. All interior work will be done by the end of business on Friday. If, it is astonishing right now, how many contractor vehicles are in the high school product packula at any given day? And how much of a push is on to get this done? Cause not only is school starting, the window to use federal funds is rapidly closing. So, we have to have that work done and invoiced. The storage cabinets still to come from the musical area because they lost a closet, uh, structural repairs, uh complete the gym as an eating area, it's still gonna be off limits, cause it's still gonna be uh, active construction at least two weeks into the school year. There's still some abandoned air vents that need to be closed off in cafeteria. There is a whole punch list of work that's there, but um, you know, unless I see something different tomorrow, I, I'm confident that we'll be able to open. Students' staff might experience some areas that will be closed off, petitioned off, uh, but there'll be no heavy construction going on with students. And the middle school, again, it, it, the big work there was their, their air conditioning project and the testing is still going on is what I was told, I don't know, Principal McGuire, do you have anything?
Yeah, last, last week, I think, was the first.
The first, fire up, as they call it, yeah. It seems an odd term for an air conditioning system, but yes, so. So, again, I, I shake my head every time I go there, like, I, I know it's not your school, but Bennington Elementary School, the elevator is, is essentially completed, uh, and so happy that we were able to get punched through, that's something that I put as a priority every year. And it's almost a million dollars, when we have a, you know, a million dollars in elementary budget. And the second floor of that school was just not accessible to anybody uh, who had accessibility issues. So, uh, it was waiting up, it was substantially complete, there was issue with the telephone that was in the elevator. You know, the emergency phone, Joe's on the elevator, uh, it was there, but they couldn't get tone to it, they had to run new lines, so, you know, between a local electrician and uh, Suzer I T and our techs here, they, you know, I was told today that they do have tone and they can schedule now the final inspection of the elevator. There, there isn't a school that hasn't been touched this summer, so just, there's so many people to thank and uh, I have asked Holly to do a complete report and she's working with Katie West, her public information coordinator for photos, so at a subsequent meeting, uh, cause I thought it was gonna be September, but there's other things for the September gem, uh, September agenda that may push it back to October, but we will have a full presentation for you at a future meeting soon of uh, what all this work will be.
Thank you, any questions? Okay, um, we'll move on to high school athletics.
Yeah, um, so I've got a couple of things, uh, one, I, I posted the nominations, uh, fortunately uh, we are fully staffed for the, for the fall, uh, you know, all positions were, were hired from head varsity coaches to assistant coaches to JV to middle schools, so uh, that's a positive, um, you know, for, for us coming into the season. So, you have that, I think that was in your, in your packet, you can see those names. Um, and then I have a couple of things, I've talked to uh, Superintendent Cokeen, I've talked to Mr. Payne. Um, and I talked with Renee as well, a couple of things just to put on your radar and then I'll open up to questions if you guys have them. Um, back in the, uh, back in the spring, the board, you know, asked me to research or work on the seven, eight lacrosse, uh, you know, situation. I did have a meeting with uh the outside Mala agency, um, and coaches, uh, and it was very productive. And um, they did request that we, you know, take over the seventh and eighth grade uh, lacrosse program and bring it to the, to the school. Um, and that could be something that we add for our future, you know, budget, but I do think for this year, um, just I'm looking for, at, in chat with Renee that we should be able to for this spring, um, you know, hire coaches, pay bussing, referees, my estimate is it's probably gonna be, you know, eleven to twelve thousand dollars for both a boys team and a girls team combined. Like, meaning like total. Um, the equipment, the uniforms, that will be shared from Mala, um, so we're not gonna have to start from, from scratch on that. Um, but I do think there is, um, you know, some, some budgeting, um, you know, kind of built-ins that we could, we could use. Not using the contingency fund, Renee, but uh, I think we'll be okay, you know, to, to be able to address some of the, some of the stuff, so um, that was something that you guys asked for and I think the Mala organization wants it. And I know there are some schools around, uh, I know Bradaville started with a, a seventh, eighth grade. And I think for the future of the lacrosse program, especially at the JV and high school level, um, it's gonna have to, it's gonna have to happen sooner rather than later. So, rather than wait another whole year, they were, I think we'll be okay to, to run it for this, um, this spring. So, I wanted to give you a little stuff on that. Um, and then one other thing, and I talked to Mr. Payne about this and, and Superintendent as well, wanna make a recommendation, um, that are, like, the drama department at our school is kind of, um, it's a treasure, we have a fantastic drama department. Um, but really, it, it go, it's treated as um, one club that goes for the whole year. And what I think should happen is it should be, you know, focused on the fall performance, it's actually, the drama is like two varsity sports, it should be two seasons. Um, and it should be the fall and how much time they put in for that. And then the spring happens and then they put in just as much time again, you know? Um, and so, just in looking, and again, I think we have the, the monies in the budget. Um, you know, the rough estimate is, it's probably for the costume person, the sets and the production, the sound and all that, it's probably around fifteen thousand. You know, that we pay for the, for the entire drama department. So, my recommendation, um, is that we do it for the fall and then we do it again for the spring, so they get, you know, paid for, for the performance as opposed to, um, just the amount of time that they put in to like, make that happen. Um, I think, you know, it's, it's, it's completely justifiable, you know, to, um, to do that. So, those are my, like, two recommendations just going forward, um, and I'm happy to answer, you know, questions.
Is treating the drama club as a two-season mixture of curricular, does that make it easier for students to participate in one over the other or play a sport and do drama? Or do you see that kids are already doing that?
I think they're already doing that, I think what it does do, and I said this to, to some people, like, if it's a musical, you know, in the fall, maybe you hire, you know, an assistant who's good, you know, has the choreography or has the this. If it's a play in the, you know, in the spring, maybe you hire someone more for sets or more for, you know, so I think it gives, doesn't have to be the same. Um, you know, people, we, we'll treat them as two, two seasons, um, and kind of pay accordingly that way. So, it's not, you're not committing for the whole year, it may be the same person twice, but maybe you say, oh, I can help, but I can only help in the, in the fall. So, I, I don't think it's gonna affect the students, but I think it may affect some adults being able to, like, be an advisor only for the spring, not for the fall or vice versa.
I think it's nice that an athletic director is giving uh, drama consideration.
Well, athletics and activities and activities.
Technically, what is your title, though?
I know, it's, it's very tricky. Athletics and activities.
But I agree. And I, I, Mike did speak to me about it and Superintendent concurs that, you know, it should be treated as two separate activities. What would you want on the Spinelli handle?
Yes, well, that's a, that's, that's a question you can, um, we are moving along and give a Spinelli uh, update. I don't know if you, if it's appropriate now, if you want to.
I was gonna use the chair time to do it too, so whatever.
So, we're, uh, we're in process, I know, um, Glenn has started the, the email chain and Renee is on it, Stephanie's on it, there's a bunch of people on it. We're working on collaborating and kind of figuring that out. I know I booped Katie Weston as well to have, you know, her get some eyes on it and try to figure out what's best to kind of produce that. So, we're working on, on that. Uh, on top of that, we're working on trying to uh, figure out the best kind of fundraising platform. And I think we have, uh, you know, I tried with Renee a couple of times this week, I've got her on speed dial. Um, and uh, we talked about like that, um, you know, process and I think we're, we're moving forward with, with like, a way to actually start kind of collecting donations that people may want to, may want to make, so, um, things are moving, things are moving.
There had been a question at the last meeting about the two different platforms and one that charged a substantial admin fee. You have.
Yeah, I was there, yeah, I was there, and so the one that we're leaning towards is the one that, you know, Renee's done some research and it seems like the, the best with very, very little ease charge.
And yes, Susan had a call with them, because she was like, it's too good to be true, and she had a call with them and said, no, it's great, their platform's, you know, they have, there's a lot of things that they can do, so it seems to impress and a couple of other ones.
Yeah, yeah, so we're working on the language and like, what we want the, you know, have anyone seen like a GoFundMe, you know, page and it's not a GoFundMe, but you need the, use images and what's the language gonna be behind it, how long does it roll out more and, you know, so we're just kind of finalizing that. Um, and I'm gonna pass that along to Renee to kind of proof and then open that.
Thank you for, um, your work on getting that information on the lacrosse, I think that'll make a huge difference. Is your hiring that you had indicated, does that include those two new coaches or is that you, you have?
I've just done the fall, but, you know, so the, what you saw in the nominations are just the fall. Um, and then, now, once the fall starts, then I start working on the winter, you know, and then once the winters start, you know, so it's just, uh, so everybody for the fall is hired and then we'll, we'll kind of, we'll start looking at where, where our holes are for the winter and spring.
Did other receive those? I'm speaking, uh, that it's. Okay, yeah.
So, what, I think it was there, uh, I know I sent it and I saw it, but I don't know that it, uh, I don't know.
Maybe. Oh, it looks similar. It's not the.
Yeah, it may have got, yeah, it was.
Maybe it was the first package. Oh, maybe I just looked in the amended.
I think it was, I think it was in the first package, maybe you should get to the amended.
Any other questions? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, we don't have, um, any student representatives for this evening's run of the high school?
So, we probably want to.
It's supposed to, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I start the general one or the conversation on flex? Question, yeah. Would you like me to start with general oversight or?
I think, however you, I, I think.
Alright, let's do this really quick, I can do the general, uh Mr. Cokeen mentioned it, uh, earlier, I, I only needed to hire four subject area teachers this year to, in science, one in mathematics and one in social studies. Uh, that is the smallest number by a lot in forty years that I've been at M A U, so I appreciate the progress, uh, and the change in trend. We are getting a few more candidates, I wouldn't say it's going to be a long number. Uh, we hosted, uh, building tours and class pictures today, uh, and yesterday we had quite a good turnout, especially with the ninth and tenth graders, it was nice to see everybody coming in from, uh, our vacation, I would say it's a mix of excitement and also of dread, as the summer is almost over, but it was nice to see everybody. Uh, we do, we will be hosting our ninth grade family orientation tomorrow evening from five to seven. Jim talked about flexibility, uh, we are able to host that in the building, we will not be using the three spaces that we normally gather large groups in, uh, but they are gonna be hosting in the courtyard, we're gonna take advantage of what I hope is a sunny, warm afternoon. And then we'll be, uh, providing information throughout the first level of the building, that is from five to seven tomorrow. Open to all incoming ninth graders and their families, we welcome folks to be there. Uh, next week, Monday the twenty-sixth is the first day for teachers and staffs, I can tell that by the uptick in email. Uh, ninth graders, their first day is Wednesday the twenty-eighth, it's only ninth graders that can come in, this is a better tradition at the high school, I think it's a nice way to kind of ease into the school year and then grades ten, eleven, twelve will join us on Thursday the twenty-ninth. And for my planners, uh, open house this year at the high school will be September twenty-sixth at six P M. I want to thank Mike for taking a look at the athletic calendar, it always helps determine.
There are no home games scheduled, open house.
Yeah, it's kind of a magical world, it's kind of self-select, uh, so that is my general information, would you like me to segue into?
Sure.
Okay, so there, there is a, a document that I left with the superintendent, if we wanna provide that, a copy of that, every board member, uh, folks can, uh reference that as we talk about this. You should receive something that looks like this, uh, I wanna say first, this is not my creation, this comes from the skilled hands of Kelsey Maxwell, who is my director of curriculum and instruction at the high school. This is for folks who have a phone, who would like to see this electronically, uh, but I also, if you flip the page, it has notes that we'll talk about briefly. I promise not to go word by word, that uh, they're used to be fine. So, uh, uh, let me start with this. The current schedule for the high school for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year is a, uh, school day is divided into five blocks of seventy minutes. Uh, that means that four of those seventy-minute blocks will be classes, which means students will take four classes in the first semester. They will have an opportunity to take four additional classes in the spring semester for a total of eight credits by the end of the school year. The fifth block of seventy minutes is two pieces, it is lunch and it is flex block, which we provided at high school. Question that was raised, and I can come back to the schedule if folks have that, but the question was raised, uh, and it's not unusual, I've had this in the past, is that do I really have to take lunch and flex, could I skip that and take a fifth class during the school day? Could I skip that and take a fifth class during the school day? Could flex simply be removed from the schedule? So I want to talk a little bit about what we use flex for and what the state's expectation is of us at the MAU. So if you start at the top of the handout, it's gonna quote a little bit of of legislation from Vermont. It talks about providing all students with an evidence-based positive behavioral practices to promote social and emotional learning. The agency of education, and this was raised by a member of the community, does not require social emotional learning competencies to graduate. There are no standards in which you look at for social emotional learning. That is correct. However, it is their expectation, if you go further down in that second paragraph, that we will provide social emotional learning intervention across the K twelve system, which is what we are trying to do. That is identified also within the Vermont Portrait of a Graduation. At little paragraph number three, the agency of education, and this is not unusual in the state of Vermont. They are not prescriptive in saying you will do this, this, and this. However, they say we would like you to provide S E L. You find your way to how to do that. So it recommends resources. It addresses it as a school-wide social emotional learning, specific explicit S E L instruction. Again, they don't give a specific piece. So the first bolded paragraph at the high school, we use flex block to provide a universal instruction. Every student, social emotional learning. And we use a curriculum which has been vetted, that is School Connect. If you're using electronic version, Kelsey has given you a a link, so you can check that out for folks. Tier one, tier two, and tier two supports that provide social emotional learning are outlined in the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five MAU H S and T S S manual, which is signed off by both Ms. Boudreaux and Mr. Koke. That is in alignment with the state's expectation. We also use Flex Block to address our continuous improvement goals for a safe and healthy school. Again, these are universal interventions providing social emotional learning for all students using School Connect. There is a second piece, again, concern raised by the community and not for the first time. Are there standards? How does this connect to things that we expect kids to do when they are graduating? Second piece of legislation down there is the educational quality standard. These are standards for which everything that you teach in school are supposed to be connected to. There are two specific competencies there. One is personalized learning plans, which I won't touch on this evening. The other is transferable skills. Transferable skills are things that we are teaching kids. It should be across curriculum. This is communication. This is self-direction, problem-solving, responsible citizenship, all these things. School Connect links to transferable skills. It is, its lessons are connected to that for us. It also aligns with the Mount Anthony Union High School Portrait of a Graduate. The reason I share this with you is that I recognize, and I have heard this from folks. A, is flex consistently implemented across the building? And I would answer, no. We did our first year with School Connect this past year. I would absolutely say that there are some teachers who excel at it and there are other teachers who are struggling. I will say that Ms. Meisel has a committee specifically for how we use Flex Block. We asked faculty for feedback on how we can improve it. We are taking that in consideration for the first, for the second year. Part of that is partnering. Some folks have said, look, this is not my wheelhouse. I'd like to be partnered with someone who's a little more comfortable covering these topics, so we will be doing that. The second piece of feedback came from kids, which is, look, I'm a twelfth grader sitting in flex and some of these lessons feel really young to me, middle school, ninth grade. I've heard that, so we've gone back through that, called the lessons, which we have the flexibility to do, hopefully making them more pertinent to older students especially. There is one other piece I will, and I'm happy to answer questions. There is one other piece at the bottom is that transferable skills and personalized learning plans. That is addressed in the Mount Anthony Union High School Parents' Guide to Grading. That is also linked in this document. But that is also on the website, so if folks would like to see specifically, hey, I'd like to learn a little bit more about what personalized learning plans are and what transferable skills look like, I would send folks. I will say that the schedule when I arrived had been in place, Dave and I have talked about it, it was in place when I taught here in the nineties. So I want to recognize that we have changed the schedule twice in the last two years. That's a lot to ask the building, with a hundred teaching staff and eight hundred and fifty kids. I do feel that this year with the four equitably split seventy minute blocks is a better solution. One department gets more time, kids have more opportunities than six opportunities this year. This past year, now they will have eight. Over a course of a student's career, at this point, they'll have thirty two opportunities to earn credit. You only need twenty four to graduate, which means I will be coming back to this committee to talk about that. Because one of my observations here for the last years is I have seniors who do everything that we ask of them. They arrive at their senior year and the only thing they need to do is English. And many of my students are taking it at community college. They take it online. They're going off into early college, all of which is good. But I really need to talk about how do we structure a meaningful senior year for kids? Not everybody's going to college. Are they prepared to go off to school, trade school, workplace, military, all those things? There is another opportunity as well. We are partners with Southwest Tech. We are physically connected to each other. Our schedules are tethered together. Anything that I make a change in the high school has an impact on my partner across the hallway. Meg Hotziger, many of you may already know her. She was the associate director for many, many years. She is now superintendent and director of the tech. She and I meet weekly. An opportunity for us to talk because I'll give you, and I just want to share this with folks for future thought. If a student has eight blocks of opportunity in their school year, if they sign up for a program at the tech, we're only encouraged to do. Well, that's Kelsey Meisel piping in. She's checking to make sure it's for a proper. If you sign up for culinary, if you're in forestry, if you're in construction, four of those blocks over the course of the year are committed to that program. It's a big commitment. That means the other four become even more important to what am I getting done? Because it's important to recognize, in order to earn a Mount Anthony diploma, you don't have to complete credits in Southwest Tech, but you do have to complete credits in the MAU. Four years of English, three years of science, three years of social studies, and three years of English. So moving forward, we're gonna have to be working with our partners at the tech because I support kids taking classes in tech. How are we gonna ask them to commit to a program and still meet their graduation requirements in addition to taking things that might be interesting to them? It could be art. It could be playing in a band. But ultimately, I want to tell you that we're gonna get to the point where kids are gonna make choices. There are only so many blocks of time in a day. And so I I don't anticipate a future where I won't have kids coming to me saying, I need more time in the day. Is there any way to carve out more space so I can can do that? The state does not require a lunch, but it strongly encourages me and the ADD group is our community partner, hammers me constantly. We're supposed to provide students with thirty minutes uninterrupted lunch opportunity. Removing that concern is that kids won't eat. They won't eat healthy, and that's a concern as well. So flex and lunch are paired together in our schedule up on purpose. It allows us to flex so that we don't have, folks who've been in the building, historically, the first lunch would have four hundred kids in it, and then every other lunch had a hundred and fifty. It allowed us to even out lunches, and that has been an improvement this year. So my purpose was to talk about flex, why we do it, and what we are working toward providing in that space. But this is a conversation going forward about how do we provide opportunities for kids to recognize there are ultimately limits to how much you can cram into a kid's day. Any questions?
Battle Day Parade, someone did a heck of a job getting the float on Spinelli, and they ought to have a pat on the back.
That's Stefan.
Congratulations, nicely done.
That's a really big help from coworkers.
I was at.
That was my own effort. This is not a board. It was not a board effort. Yeah, there was no other board member there myself. Yes.
The other people asked me, how come we didn't have our band in the parade? I was curious on that.
I don't believe the band commits to Battle Day because it's a summer function. I think they commit to parades that happen within the school year.
So you used to, there used to be a band camp, like that happened in August. That has not been the case for for a while now. So I think, and that would lead to the Battle Day, like they used to do a two or three day camp. So that has happened for a while, so that's why they don't end up doing the, you know, the Battle Day because the band essentially isn't together yet.
To go back, just to, the how are other schools handling the, rather, it seems like it might be a little loose, a little up to, up to the building as to how to handle the social emotional learning requirements? Is flex or something like it used in Brattleboro, Rutland?
A good question. So we didn't, what we went looking for when Kel, Kelsey's not on the list anymore, but I give her credit.
She's here.
Oh, she is. Okay. When we, when we said, okay, we need to provide a social emotional learning component. It has to be across the school. We didn't go to neighboring schools, which she did instead was, hey, let's go look and see what folks are using for a resource. With the purpose being, you know, it's a little bit of contract too, because you're asking teachers to facilitate it, but you can't ask them to plan for it and develop a curriculum for it. I think that was one of the reluctance is that teachers were like, look, it's one more thing I need to manage. So we went, instead of looking at what a Brattleboro do or Rutland, we were looking at a resource. And we started with School Connect, who then said, hey, this is where we are in Vermont. This is what other people are doing. So we we approached it as, let's find a resource that can do it. We make a commitment of one day a week. Specifically, hey, we're all gonna do this. And then we do P O P ones. We tell teachers what we would like them to do during those days, so it's one less thing they don't have to manage during their day.
We had, we had professional learning come in. We we had a trainer come in. They walked us through it. Training, like I said, Kelsey maintains a working group on making flex effective.
I think where, this was really helpful for me because I know, you know, you get, you get in those grocery store conversations where somebody comes up and says, there's this thing called flex. Like it isn't doing anything in it. What, why? And and then they also don't have, they have, they don't have enough, they can't take all their, all the courses that they need and get gym. And you factor all that together. If they weren't taking flex, they'd be able to get the gym and they'd be able to, it all snowballs. And so I think being able, us being able to hear this and at least probably refer people back to you. But being able to answer questions and and hear how how it's played out was really helpful, so thank you.
I will, I will give you, so my brother-in-law graduated from here in the nineties. He's a computer technician, you know, now very successful. But it was a struggle in the nineties to get, he wanted to take A P U S history and also take computers in the tech center. That will continue to be a struggle because what happens is you take, who would like A P U S history? One of the kids who want to take it, and you find where they can all join together and take A P. I'm telling you right now, it challenges the tech center because how many of those kids are in computers? How many of them are cooking in the kitchen? How many of them are with Tom Haskins in the garage? How many of them don't take a tech center at all? So I I can, I can especially understand it as kids get older and move through high school, the frustration of specifically kids who would like to access the tech and the highest level of classes or specific classes that we have in the school. It will continue to be a challenge. What I will say though is Meg has been a fantastic resource. She attends our building admin meeting weekly just to check in. How can we work together? Do we have concerns? I feel like the level of communication from the, between the MAU and the tech has been fantastic. And I credit her fully as that. And she remains committed as superintendent to continue to do that.
Might be a little bit of a marketing opportunity in terms of the questions that parents have. Just because I lived this last week when I was looking at the schedule and saw flex. And thanks to the teacher who got right back to me when I asked what it was. But the term flex implies that there's flexibility with that course, you know? So I didn't know if it was something that hadn't been settled in yet, if it was something that was, you know, a holder for an elective. But I may just consider calling it something else to discourage the thought that it's flexible.
Well, and I, I I hear you. I will tell you that Rutland is often used as a good example in the state. Because what we're, what we would like to eventually get to is everybody takes flex at the same time. In Rutland, they use an app and students can use that block of time to do flexible callback. And that's because everybody has flex at the same time. Every teacher in the building is available at that time. So I've got a question about projects that's due. I've got a lab right up. I've got, they'll finish a quiz for my math teacher. We don't want to use flex only to do social emotional learning. We'd like to have it one or two days and use the rest of it to get kids to adults that they have in their building. And that's what we continue to work for. I I'm happy to change the name. It's been called several things over time. We used flex because Kelsey's, Kelsey's really good about like, hey, when are we gonna get to that spot where we're all available and kids be moving around? So that's a, that's a goal we were working towards.
It was seminar. It was seminar. I mean, I I I taught it and everybody met their seminar students at the same time. And that became a bit of a challenge because there were so many, you know, moving parts. So I think of the flex and I did it last year until I moved into the A D role. But as it's a, the flex is day to day, that's where it flexes. Like, we're not doing the same thing every day. Like, I mean, I I would do, I had a good time with it, like with my students. And we would try different things, like we do an activity once, but then another time, maybe I'm, you know, doing a group activity with them or playing a game or we're doing, you know, something. Again, it's kind of community building as best we can. So that's where the flex comes, I think. It's not their flex, but we're flexing in here based on season it is or what's what's going on, you know, what we can do, so.
Just since you're still here, again, kudos on the middle school lacrosse. Really happy to see that that moved forward quickly. And a shout out, there was a nice article on the banner today about the golf team making a comeback above bias. But I think one of the things that helped is that Josh Crawford last year and and even the year before, they allowed middle schoolers, even though they weren't competing, to practice with the team. And I think, I I think we're seeing the fruits of that now, so we're off.
One of the things that was tricky with golf, and I don't know if the board understands, sorry, is it used to be a spring sport and then it it flexed, it switched to fall because that was better for country clubs around the state. Like the spring, they just couldn't get their courses prepared in time. It was too wet. It was like, it was, you know, people were out and they couldn't get the 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 times. The fall after Labor Day tends to be, courses are still in great shape and, you know, there's less people golfing toward the end. So that's where the switch happened. We just didn't keep up with it. And I think it's the same throughout the state, so hopefully now kids will start, you know, making that happen.
Yeah, if I can just echo that, the, from a, as a person who has a current middle schooler and one that was a middle schooler not too long ago, the the connection that I'm, that we're feeling with the coaches and the coaches, the the, even at the varsity level, with the coaches' willingness to engage with that, the kids that are at the middle school level and and let them get a taste of it and see what the, see what the team's like and the other kids on the team. And even though they'll be long gone by the time they get there, in many ways, we're seeing a lot of great, feeling a lot of great connections.
Yeah, and I think the plus also is the assistant coaches up at the middle school too, you know? So he like, he, to change casual, is the is the assistant. He worked kind of, so the kids will be able to relate to him and then bring.
Well, I'm talking wider than golf.
Oh, okay.
Nordic.
Nordic, I mean, all, it's being really felt.
That's good to hear.
Yeah.
I I wanted to ask about, I know there's been some talk about new personal technology, like cellphone use policies going into place. Can you describe that a little bit? Is it similar, is the middle school and the high school going to be similar with the same?
So we we are going to have a presentation on that at the next board meeting. So I I had asked, we had so much on it tonight, so.
And that seems like.
I'm happy to come with.
It should be listed on the agenda that we're going to, we're going to talk about that, yeah.
And even though you're not going to explain it tonight, will this all, is it going to be presented to the stu, if it's a new thing that's being put in place? Will the students know about this on the first day of school and go into detail with all of that?
I can, I can talk a little bit about that, so.
But we didn't want to, it's not listed on the agenda as a topic, and I expect there to be some controversy on it. So I want to limit to what we're saying about it tonight and make it an agenda item.
I can say it will not be a day one. We're going to take the opportunity, we have ninth grade orientation tomorrow night. We're going to talk about cellphones and personal devices in school and how we're going to help cut them down so that we can focus on school. We're going to have class meetings, probably not the first week away, we're hoping that the auditorium opens up. We're going to talk about, we're going to talk to kids about that, by grade. Open house, which will be the 26th, we're going to talk about that with parents. We're going, and our hope is that policy is in place, and I know it's working its way through the committees for folks to give feedback, and that it would be a beginning of October implementation. So we will have lots of conversations as we work through it.
Okay, and an item on a board meeting.
And purposely decide not to start the school year with it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I would say I've been working very closely with Mr. Payne. Both admin teams for MAU have been working closely together over the summer, and we'll be doing a lot of the same things that Mr. Payne just described. So we'll probably kind of team up for our, you know, for the next meeting, we'll kind of team up and and give an MAU presentation on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't even behind, sorry.
Thank you. So my first item, Mr. Colkeen covered quite well, I just had some notes about construction. I won't go into that in any more detail, but I did want to say thank you to Holly Anderson, Tony DiNofrio, Darlene Jones, head of maintenance at the middle school, and her, her crew, their crew. Because there's so much just to coordinate with the construction, you know, we had, we continued to offer high-level programming to about 100 students throughout the month of July. You know, the building has to be cleaned, wet, the floor stripped, waxed, the the floor was completely redone, completely redone, stripped right down to, it sanded right down to its original form at the middle school this summer. So there was just a lot to coordinate, and I I just really thank all of those people. Kelly Brooks, who ran Summer Recovery, just like the flexibility to make everything work. I feel like we did a nice job of offering good programming to students while still allowing for all the stuff to get done. So I wanted to say that. This week, we have been doing student walkthroughs, are inviting families up to the building with their students to do walkthroughs. We've had options Monday through Thursday, so can you do tomorrow from nine to two? We have evening hours for those who can't make it between nine and two on Tuesday and Thursday this week. So I was there last night for the walkthrough, it was, you know, well-attended. I got a lot of practice and printing out schedules and things like that, so that was good. And it's just really nice to see people, you know, smiling and moving around the building and, you know, just, there's a good excitement for the school year. Kids might not admit that, but they're a little bit excited. I wanted to let everyone know that we've made some changes to our parent drop-off loop, which I'm really excited about. It's kind of been a long time coming. Mr. Colkeen came up, I believe it was in July, to kind of check out. My associate principal, Mr. Lee, had kind of come up with, you know, he had a vision for a number of years and how we could really improve safety with the drop-off loop. So if you come up to the middle school next time, you'll see that the whole front row of parking spaces, we've moved them, we've made them not parking spaces, there's plenty of spaces in the parking lot. We've maintained handicapped accessible parking spaces. So we've covered all that, we've run through, you know, the plan with the town to make sure we're all in compliance. And there, the whole front curb out front of the main entrance to the middle school will now be a drop-off curb. So it won't just be the little loop, for those of you familiar, and, you know, what we often saw was even though we would stand out there and try to direct people around the loop and pull around the loop and go to the end, people wouldn't do that often, and then we would have kids getting out of vehicles and coming across the drop-off loop, and it was creating some dangerous situations. So I I'm really excited about that. I think, you know, we need to train people a little bit to not park in those old spots, which our signs are being put up very soon before the start of school, say, drop-off loop, no parking. There's been arrows and new lines like stenciled in, so the paint is up, and we'll be, you know, that will be ready to go day one. So I'm really excited about that, and thank you to Tony Lee, because he has been talking about this for a number of years. And and also thank you to Mr. Colkeen because it it happened quick, and he, you know, came up and supported it and saw, given the idea. So thank you for that. Covers that, and then Mr. Payne already covered the start dates and everything. I'll just say that, you know, I'm excited to get back in the building, they're there, a lot of them are there this week, starting to get in, get into classrooms and such. We've had some good success over the last couple of years with our professional learning structured in stations. So we're not, you know, just kind of standing and lecturing to, you know, the staff about, you know, new things. And we have some stations set up to rotate people through and and still allowing teachers' time to do the GCM trainings and other things that are mandatory to give time. The last thing I'll say is that we have an open house scheduled for September 12th, Thursday, September 12th, 6:30 to 8 o'clock. And as Mr. Payne said, we'll be talking at that time. That'll be one of the times that we'll be talking a little to the ground, more on cellphone expectations and, you know, ideas and and next steps that we have with that. So that's all we got. Any questions?
Okay, we can move on, committee reports. I don't believe we had any, the outside here for, if it was your policy, any last, no?
I do, but I left up my report there. Just so, because it's visible, or members be aware that there may be signage change coming at the middle school and the high school. It wasn't, it wasn't budgeted, but there's issues with both electronic signs. And so we're going to shift some line item accounts to, to.
Replace those signs.
So physically, they're not changing, it's the electronic message word part of it. My understanding is only one side works at the middle school, and the high school will only work by physically going out there.
You got it, you got it, you got to be the person fixing it.
So there'll be iCloud, they can be adjusted, and they have become important message centers. I did question the purchase, but Director, I mean, it's sitting behind me, confirmed that there is money in your budget to do it. But I wanted you to be aware in case you see this new center, but I, that was never discussed with us, or that wasn't. But I think it's, it's coming, some, some furniture accounts, you said, that are not being, like, for your, the high school lounge, it didn't quite work out or something. So that's, but, you know, I think we're talking.
An answer about that.
We're talking.
Student lounge areas. Tested one day.
I thought it was the principal lounge. So hopefully you you'll see those new signs up there, but you you'll say, oh, they didn't tell me about that.
Great, I'll move on to the chair's report. I was going to use this time to talk about the, the work that's being done on the one sheet here for Spinelli. I think we're focusing on, I'm glad we're working hard on focusing on the finance and the cost fees. We'll also be highlighting the number of events and the conditions of the field in another, on another sheet, and we are working closely with the district.
I had planned to be able to even quote some numbers, but I actually have one that's majorly incorrect, so that affects every other number that's in there, and I'm glad I quoted before we put it out there.
We'll work on that and then hopefully have a product out soon. For one, so the one thing I do want to say, just in this, I know that Fran Kenny was in and spoke in public session and quoted that there was, the A O E was imposing a 14% increase. I just want to clarify and encourage anybody who wants to see the actual increases for our district to go, and it's under the S V S U's website, under Departments and Finance. There's a sheet that Renee has done that's on tax rate information. Our rate changes across the district are between 3.7% and 11.6% as the highest. So I know that, like, when Governor Scott Scott has been speaking a lot about, like, this average, actually 15% is what I think Vermont Digger quoted him on. I just want to clarify, our education, like, we are not that high, right? And, and, you know, the, I just want to make sure that we're not getting lumped in to the rest of the school districts that are that. And that's all I have. I have a motion to adjourn.
I thought we were going to talk about nominations. Not specifically, but I just wanted to mention, because I brought it up at our, our last regular meeting. Glad that that hiring is going at the pace that it is. I know that we have a lot of teachers with provisional licenses. And what that can mean is that people have content area expertise or education, but no experience working with children. And I know that we talked to Superintendent Colkeen about an HR director's report that we made, or presentation that we may look forward to in the fall, and I just want to reiterate that I'm really looking forward to that. It's also learning about how individual schools are supporting those teachers specifically with provisional licenses to make sure that their day-to-day practice is supported and also that they're on the right track toward actual licensure.
Thank you, sorry. Motion to adjourn.